Okay, I'm calling the meeting to order of the March 14th, 2017 Zoning and Land Regulation Committee. First item on the agenda is public comment on any matter not listed on the agenda. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda? So now we'll move on to introductions. We have with us this evening Supervisors Dennis O'Laughlin, Jerry Bullock, Al Motano, and we may be joined later by Supervisor Patrick Miles. Student Youth Governance Member Garrett Stone said he couldn't be here tonight, and we'll see if Joe Finkelmeier joins us. The Director of Planning and Development, Todd Diolante, is here this evening. As well, the Zoning Administrator, Roger Wayne, and Assistant Zoning Administrator, Don Ederson. This is a ZLR Committee work meeting. Public hearings have been held at previous meetings for the items listed on the agenda. The committee will not be taking any public testimony on these agenda items. However, committee members may call upon persons to speak on an agenda item if there are any questions or concerns. When a petition is called, county staff will update the committee on the status of the petition. The committee members may have concerns or questions after discussion, and decision may be rendered. If a zoning petition is acted upon, it will be placed on the next County Board Meeting for Action, which is March 23rd. If a conditional use permit is acted upon, it is the county's final action on the matter. The next ZLR Committee meeting will be held on March 28th. Next is consideration of minutes from our February 14th and also our February 28th. And is that a motion to approve both dates?
Yes.
And second?
Yeah.
And all those in -- or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are approved. Next is Petition Rezone 11,083. The Bagan Living Trust in the Town of Primrose.
This petition was postponed at the February 28th Zoning and Land Regulation Committee meeting due to no town action. Since that time, the county has received town action from the Town of Primrose. They have approved this petition contingent upon a deed restriction being placed on the remaining A1 exclusive lands. Staff has suggested that a deed notice be placed on the property which identifies the burial mounds that are on the property and identifies that the burial mounds that any development of the property must comply with Wisconsin Statute 1570.
I'm going approval with the town and staff conditions. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve with town and staff conditions. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the petition is approved. Next is Petition 11,084. It's the Elsing Reveritable Trust in the Town of Pleasant Springs.
This petition was postponed at the February 28th Zoning and Land Regulation Committee. It was postponed due to no town action. Since that time, the Town of Pleasant Springs has acted on this petition. They have approved the petition noting that the removal of the deed restriction that was placed on this particular property under a zoning petition 6888, which prohibited the further residential development on this property, shall be removed. With the approval of this zoning petition, we'll automatically render that deed restriction terminated. Staff, this particular property is receiving a housing density right from the lands across the road. Staff is suggesting that the appropriate notice documents be placed on both properties.
I'd like a motion to approve with the town and staff conditions. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with town and staff conditions. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the petition is approved. Next is Rezone Petition 11,085. It is Mighty Oak Farm in the Town of Dane.
This petition was postponed at the February 28th Zoning and Land Regulation Committee due to public opposition. The public opposition was opposed to the location of the home sites. They stated that the development was going to be placed on productive agricultural lands, and they should be placed elsewhere. We did take a look at these three home sites with regards to the classification of soil, also grading and usability, and how they relate to the town comprehensive plan. We found that the -- all the sites were outside of the Class 2 soils. They were placed on slopes less than 12 percent grade. There is one area that has 12 to 20 percent grade in the 50 percent of this lot over here. But there is an adequate area for a home site on less than 12 percent. All could access the roads very easily. The Town of Dane has approved this petition, and there's still one housing density right remaining on the property.
I'm going approval with the conditions. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with conditions as stated, and Supervisor Motano.
Question, is anyone from the people who opposed it for tonight?
They are not. I sent out an email with regards to their statement. One of the items is that the -- with the new committee rules, if that is to be introduced as part of the record, we need a committee member to introduce that.
Well, I'll move to introduce it into the record, not that I would use it to oppose the petition. Second.
On the motion to have the email that the person who spoke in opposition be entered into the official record. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the email is in the official record. And back to our motion on the floor to approve. Any further discussion?
I think I asked this at our last meeting, but the staff report says if this -- well, it has the recommendation of the deed notice, which I assume is part of the motion, to note that one split remains on A1 exclusive, but yet in the density study, it shows states that approved, the splits will be exhausted.
Yeah, that density study was performed prior to Majid taking a look at it. It's fairly complicated because there is an existing -- I believe the existing house does not count as a housing density right, and it was taken off. The lot was created prior to the adoption of A1 exclusive in the county. So that's why it's a fairly complicated density study analysis. I did double check with Majid Allen, and he concurs that there's still one housing density right left. You checked that with the Town of Dane, they concur, and because it's so complicated, we want a deed notice on the property just so that there is a historic record of that.
Are there questions, concerns, further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? And it's approved. Okay, moving on to our plaits and certified survey maps.
We have a final plat, Uptown Crossing. This plat is consisting of 107 lots, a little over 31 acres. As far as parkland goes, Outlets 6, 7, 14, and 16 are being shown as dedicated as either parkland or open space. As far as the major highways go, you have US Highway 14 to the east. Drainage channels, Outlets 8 and 16 are being dedicated for stormwater management purposes, and there are arrows, construction arrows, as shown indicate the drainage flow. Schools are established. That's about it. This is before your certification of non-objection.
Move certification of non-objection.
Second. We have a motion and a second for certification of non-objection. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I just have to say, since you've brought it up in the past about names of housing developments, and Durham, we went by a housing development named Walden Pond. Yes, so I thought of you in the comments.
Was there a pond?
There was a lot of houses. There was a pond, I didn't see.
Probably no pond.
Yeah, so, okay, moving on to --
Used to be one.
Yeah, they filled it up. Okay, moving on to Resolution 572. I'll go ahead, and you may recall that this was introduced at our -- I'm waiting. Second to the last County Board meeting, and it is for the development of a Citizen Assistance Services specifically for immigration, and I don't know if you had a chance to see it, I sent an email this afternoon from Carlos and with the position description with a little more detail than what is included in the resolution. Also, I sent you this afternoon, again, I apologize for the lateness of it, but Communication Between the County Executive and the County Board Chair. I'll open it up for further discussion on this resolution. Supervisor Miles.
So my thoughts, and this one I initially saw this before emails and so forth, is that, you know, the question for this committee is, you know, whether or not it's appropriate for staff position to be shifted from Planning and Development Department. I appreciate Roger's memo. There's a process of that, I had my reservations about this.
Oh, good, thank you.
In large part because we don't know yet what towns are going to actually opt out of then, so I think it's premature for us to basically throw in the town and say, yeah, we know we're gonna -- it's just unwise to say, you know, we're gonna give up a position in the department before we know what the implications are. So in that regard, I don't -- that part of this I don't support as far as the need for the services and so forth. I have some thoughts on that, but I don't know if that's a real for this committee debate, but I question whether this position should be in the Office of Equity and Inclusion versus Human Services. And if the county is getting requests about sort of adjunct services or help around some of those services that people were going to get, kind of re cards or citizenship, seeking citizenship, or in need of, that to me sounds like an ombudsman position. And county exact eliminated that, I don't know if it was last year or a couple years ago with Human Services and department budget. To me, service means more, maybe we should have eliminated that position, maybe perhaps. And I appreciate, you know, I think Roger's points about the 2005 audit on the department showing staffing needs and just, you know, recognizing that we've been eliminating or shifting, you know, there's been some sharing between other departments with some staff, and so just another, I feel everyone, for not shifting a position from the department.
Supervisor O'Laughlin.
I think you said it about as well, can be said. I am not in favor of this, and I just don't think that we should be giving up a position. Where would this position fit in your department? It won't. If we were to --
No, I think we -- I think --
Go ahead, Todd.
Which position Supervisor O'Laughlin, the zoning inspector position or the immigrant affairs specialist?
The immigrant affairs specialist.
The resolution calls for that position to be created in the Office of Equity and Inclusion.
And why are we the ones called upon to fund it?
I think the -- I'll come up here. The administration had conferred with me before they went down this path, and with respect to the zoning inspector position, the position was vacated in the spring of 2016, I think April of 2016. And at that time, we had she -- we had five zoning inspectors, so that zoning inspectors went to another position, leaving us with four inspectors. We kept the position authority even going into the 2017 budget, and fully cognizant of the legislation, the state legislation allowing towns to opt out of county zoning. Now, we received notification from 12 towns that they would be headed desire or interested in leaving county zoning. Eight now are at the position where they could do so. Four have not taken the actions they need to in order to effectuate that, so we could see as many as eight towns opting out. And I think Supervisor Miles raises a good point. We don't know of those eight. Some seem very committed to it, others at the town level, they're being challenged, so we don't know what those ultimate votes will be. We have been keeping this position vacant for the past year and have operated successfully and I think effectively without the position. Our intent was to keep the position vacant going into the 2018 budget with the understanding that some number of towns are going to be opting out. There will be a loss of permitting revenues and a decrease in the permitting volumes of some magnitude, depending on which towns opt out. So instead of having to face that position going into the 2018 budget in the summer of 2017 thinking, okay, what's the expectation going to be of our department? How much do we have to come up with to cut our budget for 2018 to respond to this shortfall in revenues? So instead of having to face a layoff position because we're effectively staff, we don't have a lot of flexibility in terms of changing our budget that doesn't affect staff. So if we lose $100,000 or $150,000 or $200,000 in permitting revenues, how are we going to come up with it? So our preference would be to manage without the position, adjust operationally, and maximize our efficiencies internally, and do so without having to respond to that projected shortfall, without having to leave a position or lay off a position with somebody, it's an occupied position. So that was the understanding. DOA knew that was our approach. That was what we were committed to, and I think that was why the Executive's Office and the administration looked to us. Well, if we know Planning and Development has this FTE, it's a vacant position, their intent ultimately is to yield that position to offset revenue shortfalls, why not look to that position? I think that was their train of thought.
I'm wondering, that sort of tells me we're doing this as a defensive measure instead of an offensive measure. That kind of bothers me, but more importantly, of those eight towns that could, is there any way that we could look at the amount of revenue that they have supplied the county in the last two years, i.e. the number of zoning permits that they've -- to give us a feel for justification for reducing a staff person at this department, which bothers me a lot because you worked hard to get these positions, and, you know, things are -- we look down the road a little bit, hopefully we're going to see some more activity. So, I mean, I'm kind of torn, and I understand from a business standpoint, if I were on the executive side on this one here, I'd understand exactly what it is. It makes perfectly good sense, but in the long range, is it beneficial to this department that we represent? And I'd really like to know if any impact, if you went back just for two years and said, these are the eight towns, they did 27 zoning petitions, it would cost us $60,000 or whatever the case may be. I would feel more comfortable saying, okay, Todd, I understand that, and if this is what's going to happen, and you think we're going to lose that 60 or whatever it is, then I would support your effort.
And isn't it by April 18th, we should know, one way or another? Is it eight towns? Is it somewhere below eight towns? And most particularly which towns? You know, I think the Town of Middleton is, you know, if you looked at that list of the towns, it's going to be at the top likely of the amount of activity that happens, that impacts Dane County and the Town of Middleton, whereas maybe some of the other ones aren't so much. But I'm here to say, there's a lot we don't know.
That's what, that's kind of where, and you said it perfectly.
I appreciate that the County Board Chair is working on the executive, I know some details, and again, that's aside from the staffing thing, I mean, based on what we have before us, I think Human Services and Chair, County Board Chair have some details to work out, so I guess in that regard, I'm capable of pulling it, but I'm, the question about the staffing, being shifted from Planning and Development to the Exec's Office, I don't know if that would support.
If I could respond to Supervisor O'Laughlin, I think I have been going through that calculus. We have the staff been evaluating permits and looking at which towns have notified us, and what is the permitting volume, and roughly what is the dollar amount tied to each town? So we have been putting thought into that. Now, when the executive, well, through the department administration and talking with Carlos, when I was presented with this, I understood it, and I agreed to it. I think I was supportive of that decision, and with that logic in mind, facing the towns that we're looking at opting out, the dollar impact of it, our commitment to keeping this position vacant as we have for the past year, anticipating what 2018 budget was to bring, and it was a logical decision to me. If you look in the packet, there's Roger's memo, and I support Roger. I want Roger to have, he's the administrator of this division, he's the most directly impacted with his staff, and I think it's the right thing for him to do to speak his mind frankly. That being said, as the department's manager and having a comprehensive look at the department and being responsible for assigning resources as needed, to look at operational efficiencies and other means of getting our job done, I am confident that if faced with this decision, and if that's the will of the board ultimately and the executive, if however those branches of government come together on this, if we're asked to do this, we are capable of accommodating it. And again, administration presented me with it, and thinking about it, I supported the decision. So I don't want you all to think that this was something done to us that the executive did without consulting with us. Now, that being said, if you look in the packet, in addition to Roger's memo, Hans Hilbert, one of our Assistant Zoning Administrators, provided some thoughts, and we've been having this conversation internally. And I think with Hans's information, he has some very good ideas about operational efficiencies that can be gained, ways we can begin to get at this issue of staffing. And I think there's some very good thoughts there for us to work on. We're still talking through which of those are viable and which are not, and we're also looking at other means of trying to supplement some of the vulnerabilities in the staffing levels by bringing in other divisions, in particular the Planning Division to supplement downtimes or times when the zoning division is taxed because of time law from vacation, or zoning inspectors being ill, or needing for somebody to fill in at times when people are taking breaks for lunch. So we're looking at those types of efficiencies, and in my mind, from my position, I'm confident that we can adjust to that charge if we need to. And again, that being said, there are other considerations here in terms of points that you've made, in terms of the, is this the appropriate office for the Office of Equity and Inclusion? Should it be in another department? Is this the right way to do it? What other details need to be fleshed out? I don't, I'm not chiming in or opining on any of those, but from an operational charge, if we're charged with this, again, I supported it when it was presented to me, and I'm confident that we can adjust to it, particularly on that horizon of facing some magnitude of towns and the impact on us from a permitting level, a workload level, and a budgetary level, I think it's a logical path to look at.
Okay, you make a very, very good case, but I like what Chair Kohler said. We will know something more definitive in April, correct?
Correct.
Then would anybody disagree with the possibility of postponing this until we find out the numbers after April 24th? Because I'm trying to protect the zoning administration, as I said.
Is there a meeting on the --
Yeah, well, you're looking at a question, update on the legislation to --
Fast track that 1009?
So towns don't have to have a town meeting, town vote, or --
That's dead.
Did it?
It's dead.
Really?
Yeah.
Did you hear about the testimony?
Yeah, I, you know, it was a little long, not conditioned. Yeah.
That hasn't happened before.
But that's my understanding, and I got that from the legislative team at WCA.
All right, well, does that, doesn't that add to the timeline as far as when, I mean, towns have to notice and --
They need to have --
Because they have a choice of having an annual meeting, town vote, versus a referendum.
And they could have either a referendum on the spring or general election ballot, or they can make that decision at, vote at the annual town meeting, at which anybody that's an elector in that town may vote.
Right.
So most towns were going the path of the annual town meeting, and what AB 109 would have done was taken that option away.
And the annual meeting is typically the meeting in February.
I mean, April 18th, yeah. This year is April 18th.
The comment I'll make about it is that the impact of numbers of people in certain towns that showed up to testify, it may have a impact on decisions that are made at some of the towns because of the knowledge that has now gotten out into the community that hadn't been gotten out before, and it may change some of the leadership's thinking about opting out. So I think even though it looked like it was going to be really, really bad, it turned out to be pretty good, from a knowledge standpoint and an awareness.
Yeah, it brought people's attention to what was happening.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, to be, what I'm hearing this evening is that support the effort to provide services for those who need immigration services, with the caveat, there's more work to do. Wherever that person is, whether it's in county government or a contracted services, we need more information. And if that person, that position should come from zoning, we need to know the impact on the Planning and Development Department, that.
Correct.
You know, so throw that out, what other, what else, have I missed anything?
No, you've done it. You've captured it.
Supervisor Motano, anything you want to add?
Oh, sorry. That was good.
Anything? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we like both things.
Right.
So that would be our postponement until our second April meeting?
Well, and I, at a very least, till we have the information. It's April 25th, would be after the 18th.
Okay, I would, no, move postponement to April, like that.
So second effort discussion. Even if it looks like eight towns are going to opt out, I mean, I know how hard it is to get a position back once you let it go, and I know staff is very, very busy, and just because those eight townships opt out doesn't mean there is a lot of workload associated with those townships. So again, waiting is a good idea, we can get a feel for just what the impact will be, but I'm going to be very, I'm not easily swayed that we could just give this position up. I'm not sure it'd be the best thing for the zoning department itself.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone until April 25th? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, April, or it's postponed until April 25th. Next item is update on Madison Crushing and Evacuation, Excavation.
So on January 24, 2017, the Dane County Zoning and Land Regulation Committee held a public hearing regarding a conditional use permit for the continuation and expansion of a mineral extraction operation for Mineral for Madison Crushing and Excavating in section 26, Town of Burke. The action on the application was postponed due to no town action and public opposition. At the meeting, neighbors expressed concerns regarding the expansion of the quarry along with noise, dust, and associated activities. The Town of Burke held a meeting on this conditional use permit on February 15th. The board reviewed the proposal and determined that it did not meet several of the six standards in order to approve the conditional use permit. The board voted to deny the conditional use permit. Pursuant to the county ordinances, the town board or the ZLR committee has the authority to deny a petition. Since the town denied the application, no further action is required by the Zoning and Land Regulation Committee. The application has been logged as denied. We have spoke with the operator. He is not going to appeal this decision to the full county board. Dane County staff is working with the landowner, and over the next few months, the property will be reclaimed.
So no action, the party's word.
Okay, thank you. Any other business?
Hi, German.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you.